This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, we do have a court.
I know why you're sitting so far from me.
Why?
You know why? I gave you my number, you took my number. I sent you a text message from my phone. Good job, now you're supposed to call instead of the time.
Okay, when you're dealing with women, it's always your fault.
Yeah.
I'm glad it worked. If you had said, "Give me a call on this," I would have gone great to my ballpark.
Been married 50 years. Yes, dear.
Yeah, you're right.
I've been married almost 63.
Wow.
That's what he says to them.
No.
No.
He hardly speaks, he has Alzheimer's and Louie Boniforti mentioned, he hardly speaks on. No, he never was against the... Nice guy. Okay.
Can you unrecord for 15 minutes?
All right, Mike Berginini.
Good evening.
Lloyd Colston.
Here.
Brendan Jellings. Chris Johnson.
Here.
Travis Spearman. Dwayne Eastman.
Here.
Cody Richardson.
Here.
Dottie Smith.
Did we hear from Brandon or Travis?
I did not hear from them, so I just... Not able to be here.
Okay. Let's go over our minutes.
But we approve.
Second.
All signers signify with aye.
Aye.
Close? Done? I need...
Who we go to? About your carports, public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Any more favor?
Aye.
Public hearing.
All right. I don't know if I can spend a lot of time, everybody here except for our commissioner was here last time, so I won't spend a lot of time on it. But just to remind you, just real quick. So what this provision would do if it was enacted, it would be, it would allow carports for single-family and two-family homes located on lots that do not have a platted alley associated with them. Like we discussed, Brad Meek, for example, is one of those neighborhoods, just a good example to be aware of. In order to do that, if you had a property that was on a lot that didn't have an alley, you would have to meet these six conditions. We kind of went over this the last time. The carport would have to be on a paved driveway. You could, and we discussed this too, that it had to be, it didn't have to be pre-existing, but it would have to be, there had to be paved. The carport could not be used for such things as storage of materials or equipment or anything that's...
Be a car.
Not a car, basically. Obviously, there's some miscellaneous stuff that probably would end up in there, it's not the end of the world. But the idea is not to store anything. It can't be enclosed, it has to be open on three sides, so it's a true carport, not a garage. That would, that would take away the approval. The carport would be up to 18 feet in width, that would be like a two-car garage to cover the two-car garage. No such carport could be closer than five feet from the property line. So Dottie and I were talking about this yesterday.
I don't know, I don't know. I measured it.
Yeah, so that would be just a real rough thing. Most of the property's lines seem to be somewhere in the seven, six, seven-foot range from the curb or the edge of the street. And then sort of be another five feet past that. So roughly 12-ish feet from the, from the edge of the street. And in Brad Meek's, so with, in their neighborhood.
Yeah, I went and talked to them and we measured it out, it leaves just enough room to cover their car.
Yep, that's kind of what we're shooting for. Yep. And then all such carports should be constructed with materials that are compatible. So the idea there is we're not talking about a pre-manufactured metal carport. It should be built in place and it should, as closely as possible, match the structure and appear to be tied in with the structure. Sometimes structurally, that's not possible. Chris could probably attest to that, that it's not, it's possible to do that. But we want it to look like it's there. And we also discussed, I think Dwayne mentioned this last month, about if it was a metal house, that would be fine because it still ties in with that. So, good question, though, certainly.
Okay. I've got a bunch of questions.
Sure.
Is this specific to certain areas or just wherever there is not an alley?
So the way I wrote this was specific to just areas that have no platted alley.
Okay, that's fine. In the, I understand it's set back, city east, five feet beyond that. I drove these neighborhoods and almost every one that put a carport in or bought a house that had a carport built with the house, have enclosed them. They've made rooms, your house, they've made rooms out of them. They've done, or any of these committed, wouldn't it take a permit to do that?
It would have. So, I can't speak to any, before my time, obviously.
There's been a bunch since your time.
There has been some that have been put up, I guess.
Why isn't it enforced? What makes me think you're going to enforce this if you happen to enforce what you have?
That's a fair critique. I'll give you that. There was a one in particular I know of that was put up, kind of down the street around the corner. That one was a case of it got put up over the weekend. And that's probably where most of it went.
Monday comes.
Monday does come.
How long's it been?
That one's probably been there for about 15 years.
Oh, and it wasn't enforced. What makes me think you would enforce this?
I'll give you that, that's, that's fair.
What was your take?
It's a fair critique, so...
You're not going to tear it down.
Oh, there have been some that have been...
We have, we have done.
Oh, yes.
Have you?
There was one on South Beach. He built this huge thing in the front yard, it was structurally sound. Designed it, he designed it as a carport, put it up himself, but it wasn't structural. Of course, there was no permit. Nice guy, he complied, and now he's done a bunch of things with permit. But as I'm driving these neighborhoods, I'm seeing a bunch of these originally carports that have been made into full rooms.
There's probably been a few of those.
Uh huh. So what enforcement is there? I'm not expecting you to go and tell people to tear out their rooms.
Right.
I want to know what enforcement it is.
So what, what would normally happen?
Otherwise, we're going to have a whole bunch more rooms.
I got you.
If they're permitted.
I got you. So what, what would normally happen in this case is we would identify that it was a violation, have a permit. Or that one of these provisions was, what we would do then is send a letter to the property owner, let them know that there is a violation present there and that it was done appropriately without a, without a permit. Or if it was done with a permit, it was not done according to plan. So we, we have the provisions in place to do that. It's just a matter of actually...
Do we do it?
Yes.
Why haven't we done it? We've had those provisions.
That's on me.
That's on you?
That's on all of us, only person that could be blamed for that.
I'm blaming you.
Well, could they be fined?
They could. That was, so the provision that she's referring to was about this close to going to court.
I keep mentioning the words due process frequently when dealing with government. And even if he sends a letter, and even if there is a fine, due process says that I can balance it up.
Oh, yeah. Right. I've probably been here in this city, and it's been through years, it was there when I was in office, it was there when you were in office, many ordinances are passed, very few are enforced. What's the point in having a resolution or an ordinance without enforcing it? If you're not going to enforce it, oh please, let's not do it. Let's not burden some and not enforcing those that go against it.
That's been my heartburn for four years. Governments enacting ordinances, and once they're enacted, the people to enforce them turn blind eye to whatever the enforcement or figure is.
Right now, drivers, about 10 years ago, the city was pretty clean. Passed an ordinance that required alleys to be taken care of and have furniture outside on the porch or in the front yard. And your neighbor, oh my gosh, there's a house down the street with mattresses in the front yard. That's, that's insane ordinance, but it's not enforced.
I would say that. We do have, we do have code enforcement in the office.
Yes, we do.
It is a very big challenge to keep up with all of that. That's, that's what it comes down to.
Thankfully, we have a frost, a killing frost.
Yes.
And my neighbors' high weeds are not going to be a problem.
Oh my gosh, is that what it takes? I have a neighbor that lets them just grow with the city.
And here's the thing about, I can turn in my neighbor, and I have.
It shouldn't be a citizen's job.
No, it shouldn't be, but I have turned in my neighbor. But most of the neighbors in this community don't want to be hard-headed and hard-handed like I am.
It should not be citizens' job to notify the city when this is...
But the code, in defense of that, the code enforcement is, correct me, one person working a 40-hour week, regardless.
I understand.
And you'd have to be driving down my street to see the high weeds my neighbor has. And one of the houses in violation frequently is a house that is in a state of disrepair anyway. And they, they don't have time to drive by that every 90 days to see the high weeds.
I understand. But if we enforce, if, if it is enforced in areas, some of them, people start complaining because they know they're going to find this will happen or this will happen. You let it go, it's let go all over the city.
And Josh will, will stand up for me on this one. Most of my calls to Josh and planning involve trees blocking the roadway. It's a traffic hazard, so that's...
Oh, I've shown up at the city with lists. And you're not supposed to have. You're not, I show up with Mike, to Mike.
That's fine.
Yeah, I typically go to Mike, that's his job. Yeah. So now he has somebody that works full-time or part-time.
Full-time.
So you have two full-timers, and then you part. And he said, "Well, I don't, you know, I don't see them, I can't drive her, so take a different way home. Take a different way to lunch, take a different way back, you'll see." But anyway, that's my concern. We're going to pass another ordinance, and is it going to be enforced? Actually, Bobby.
I will. Have my assurance that I will enforce. You have my word.
Do you have a security detail on your home?
Do I?
No.
Yes.
Okay, another question. Those that violated your ordinance 15, 20 years ago, shame on you, that should have been handled when you weren't here then, should have been handled then. How long you been here?
So I started in 2008.
Uh huh. So, but those of the that have violated, say, in the last five to 10 years, deal with it. Okay, that's Mike, right?
How would you contact people that are wanting to do, build a carport? How would they know that they need a permit? I mean, I know you have to have a building permit if you do anything that's more than, what, 80 feet? 80 square feet or?
Anything structural requires a permit.
Structural?
Anything structural requires a permit.
So if it's connected to the structure itself, yes, it would require a permit.
Yeah.
If it was, if it's an accessory building, then it's got a little bit of rules. Then if it's under 200 square feet, it does not require a permit per coach.
Man, I should have built a bigger accessory building.
Okay, so, so public would need to be notified that this is going into effect.
Sure.
We already have something similar. So, but this is going to open it up for areas that happen to do that.
Right.
And they need to know they need a permit.
We can do some things to get that information out, that's, that's not an issue. And we really need to probably do it for, not just that, obviously, but all sorts of different things. We can delegate somewhere down again, too. We can do that.
How are we going to do that?
So we have our website. We have, we have Facebook. Those are probably the two primary ones. We could probably do something with newspaper as well.
About something in, since it's not one issue, about something one.
We could do that, too, absolutely.
And where?
Waterville.
Oh.
Flyer in the Waterville.
Yeah, we can do that.
It goes to every house.
Yep.
If they read it.
If they read it.
Well, of course, if they read it, we can...
That's true.
Truthfully, I might speak up on this. With this storm that came through, I feel like we've had more foot traffic, more phone calls about what requires a permit, who needs a permit, who needs a license, who need, you know, there's been more questions asked about permitting and licensing. And do you have old permits? Do you, you know, more so than there has been in the last 17 years that we've worked there. And so I think people are kind of paying attention to that a little, a little better. Also, something that we did was, we were sending lists out every time we licensed somebody, that list was being updated, so people knew that these are some of the requirements. So, so, yes, I, I think we realize that some citizens don't use the website very often or don't have social media and use that very often, but they don't... I mean, we can send information out in the Watervilles, too, and they won't read that either.
Yeah, but at least it's from the...
But at least it's there.
I mean, I'm not going to be, I'm, I'm not going to go to the website, and I'm not going to look you up on social media. Not you personally, but the city. I'm not going to do it, I'm not going to spend my time doing that, but if something comes to my Waterville, I'm going to have to take a look at it.
Yes, I think that's a good idea. We have the ability to not only insert it, there are also, a smaller thing, we could even put it in a little newsletter thing. This probably is going to need to be a flyer that's separate.
Okay.
But, yeah, we can do that.
So then does that go through the city commission, too?
So, yes, so if you, if you chose to advance this, recommend, basically you're recommending approval just like we do, or three bills and everything, then this would have to go to the city commission for final approval.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone to step up?
Question, I'm just thinking, other, how closely do the departments of the city work together? I just think that the sanitation crew goes to every house in the city every week. Do they, I know they're in a rush, but they, if you see something going on down that address or down the worst, now, I guess when we're thinking, where's the worst part of the roads? Where's the worst houses? Those people see every single house, every single week.
We, we do get emails from the sanitation department that there isn't overabundance of trash on a consistent basis. Without...
I guess it's just as far as overgrown weeds or, you know, they say we can't drive every street or any of those things. Are there other departments that are around that one guy that'd have to drive 100 miles and thousands of miles up the street around the town? There's a lot.
Well, an illogical answer would be, police would be...
Yes, police, they drive along the road.
Power would be doing some...
I don't know how those teams work together at all.
Especially during hyperflushing season, they would be out doing stuff. But I think you mentioned sanitation, and my sanitation pickup is at dark, early.
Yeah, I mean, they may not be the best, but there's several, there's several groups of people in our city around every...
As frustrating as it is with nuisance and property maintenance stuff, for as long as we've worked there, it's been complaint-based.
Yeah.
I mean, as frustrating as it is, and I know, I mean, that's taking time out of the citizens, they do, and we understand that, but...
Well, we have encouraged, though, for sure, is when they do get a complaint, they go out there and next door neighbor, or maybe three or four houses on the same block have the same problem. Weed is a really...
Yeah, yeah, it's looked at as a whole and not just the...
They do look at that one, they'll, they'll go ahead and...
Yeah, they do, the whole one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we do the same thing with the overgrown alleys?
Do we have alleys you can't drive to?
Yeah, there's still something like that.
Jeez.
And not after every citizen being a cop or their neighbor. However, I am in favor of, if you see something, say something. So if I'm having a wall party and you live across the street from me...
I'm going to call them. If you didn't invite me, I'm not sorry.
See, that's why that doesn't matter.
Don't have my number yet.
You can't do anything, Lloyd.
I know.
Okay. Gentlemen, you've gone through this, you've listened to Josh, you've listened to me, right? You've heard the citizens. Do you have any further discussion?
Commissioner, do you have anything to add?
I would suggest that you get a hold of everybody in town that still sees carports and have them notify the people when they buy it that they need a permit.
That'd be the real person, email.
That'd be your carpenter.
Are you talking, you're talking about the bolt-together ports?
Yeah.
We have any, what are you doing with Selsa?
You see, like the ones that are the metal ones, yeah, the metal ones.
Okay.
We have somebody you have found with Selsa?
Hans does, for sure.
Hans Selsa? Let's notify Hans that they're illegal.
They're illegal?
In the front yard for this.
Oh, for this, for this, they're not legal. But you're saying they do require a permit, no matter what?
Yeah.
Right?
Pretty much.
Yeah, there's really no case when a carport wouldn't, because even if they're an accessory, like in their backyard or whatever, they're going to be more than 200 square feet. So, and yes, even the ones that are the bolt-together ones, we do prefer it.
So then my other thing is, well, you kind of put this off, so we could, I mean, this doesn't apply to me and my neighborhood necessarily, so I'm wondering, does the public think this is going to be nice for them? I know you think it's great for you, but in general, do people think this is an eyesore? Or everybody wants...
They were all for it at our neighborhood.
Yeah, we was, we talked to a lot of neighbors, every one of them was all for it. They, they even admitted it.
Yeah.
That passes, I'd like to have a carport, too.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a good idea because it protects...
It's not something we...
A big adventure with your car the month before.
I've talked to your husband, I'd love it if you could design something from your porch where you didn't have to walk out into the weather.
Yeah.
Do you understand, because they've got the front door, they're, they're in the weather.
Yeah.
But if we didn't design something that comes out from the porch and there's the carport, they wouldn't have to get out in the rain in the snow.
The month before you applied for the variance, there was, especially right after the hailstorm, there was a number of people on Facebook wanting to do what they've done and didn't know how. And I mentioned, applied for a variance, and, "Oh, the city won't give me that, so you're a test case."
That time carports was built for the variance was many years ago. It's right against the property line of my, my neighbor. Neighbor said, "He doesn't care about, he puts in writing." So... See, I never even heard of a variance till we talked to Josh.
Yeah.
So I didn't have any idea about that. Yeah, my carport wouldn't lie to them, I wouldn't vote for it.
You wouldn't vote for your own?
No. We had somebody in your shoes that, that long ago that, oh my gosh, yeah, I almost knew you. Yeah, okay, how we doing?
Yeah, I guess, I guess, my, my point was, I was hoping to get a better feel for whatever one thought, and we don't have any more information, we have less. So, just in general, do we want this, do we want this in there or not?
We want what and where?
Do we want to add, do we want to make this permanent? I was hoping to get a little bit better feel.
A better feel for who?
We're not, this is, we're in a public hearings, I was hoping the public would come.
We are the public.
There is.
We are the public, and we also have a commissioner here.
Yeah.
Okay, so I know we have two right here that think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I know their opinion.
I went out, I, I went out...
We'll be here for you.
Yeah.
I went out with a tape measure to their house, and I was all over their neighborhood looking and measuring. And they're going to be very short carports. Most of them are long one? Yeah, if you got, if, oh yeah, if you got a big truck or a long car...
Yeah, they're going to have a truck.
Theirs is going to be just long enough to cover their car.
That's all I... Luckily, we got a small car, a smaller car.
That's all I mean.
You know, the thing is, even if you, even if you have a longer car and a foot and a half of your, back of your car is sticking out, that's going to be easier to fix hail damage on, that foot and a half.
Yes.
And if it's a whole cotton big car.
Yeah, my car, it sticks out, but my carport was designed for a little BMW sports car. So it was short. And so, but, and I have a rag four, which is a small car, but the back still sticks out. And yeah, I got damaged, so, yeah, that's the way it is.
Well, I'm going to make everybody happy, but...
Nope, well, you're never going to make everybody happy.
No.
If, some people want to put a carport in and they didn't, don't know how. I think this is probably a good thing to put in the ordinances, so, and if somebody doesn't like it, well, it's in here, they can always come down here to the planning commission and talk.
That's right.
Well, we want to put something together that, there's no point in us putting something together, voting for it, and the commissioner's going, "I hope you don't like this." So we want to do it in a way that it's, it'll be legal, it'll be something the citizens can use, they'll be notified, and it, and it's enforceable. So, and I think you've covered all those bases. And I'll be the first to come bring you in there if you don't force it.
Come on, come on, bring it, bring it.
So, any further discussion? Any more you want to say, Charlie?
I'm just here.
I'm glad to have you.
But we're giving you due process.
Good thing is, he's going to know when it comes to him.
Yeah.
Need a motion to close a public hearing?
Second.
Second? Oh, I'm moving to close a public hearing.
I'll say anymore, goodbye.
Any further discussion? They can signify with aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I didn't share that.
You didn't?
Our video. They just, they just saw you leveling people the whole time, that's all right.
The next, the fourth of zoning appeals is actually a little bit different.
So the reason I went ahead and put this back on the agenda is because you tabled it and tabled it for a month, so you don't have to do anything with it. But I, just following what was said last time.
So to approve this, this isn't, this actually isn't... The setback thing is a separate issue. And that'll be a zoning point.
Which way?
This is actually a separate issue from this.
Yes.
It's a design, but it's...
Yes, those are two different items, so what you need to do...
We'll finish this.
Is deal with this first.
We'll finish this and then go to that.
Yeah.
Okay, gentlemen, anyone do, do I have a motion?
I am on a motion forward.
We, we want...
For zoning.
So now, this, what this notion would be, would be to recommend approval or disapproval of these amendments.
I still move what Josh did.
Okay. And we have second? Any further discussion? All signify with aye.
We do need to do a roll call for this. So, Mike Berginini?
Aye.
Lloyd Colston?
Aye.
Chris Johnson?
Aye.
Dwayne Eastman?
Aye.
Cody Richardson?
Aye.
And Dottie Smith?
Aye. When will it be before the commissioners?
So usually what I do is I wait for, for reason, and conditionally instruments, we usually wait for three weeks before we take it. That gives people an opportunity, one more chance to weigh in on a case of... That gives people an opportunity, one more chance to weigh in on a case of, uh, this is a little different, we don't really do protest petitions, but we have to in the case of rezon. So usually I just stick with the same process. So this would mean it would be before, yeah, before then, the first meeting in December.
Yeah.
The second, I believe that would be.
Okay. Okay. We've done that, that's your, that's first step done. Now we're going before the commission, beginning of December. Okay, gentlemen, we need to leave the planning commission and open the board of zoning. Have a motion. Close the planning commission.
I so moved we close the planning commission meeting.
And?
And go to the board of zoning appeal.
Second.
All voters signify with aye.
Aye.
Here we are. Okay, Josh, what do you got?
So again, this is, we still have the same case before you from some last month. They weren't supposed to. Basically, what I recommended to you at that time was approval with basically these same conditions. At the last meeting, of course, you chose to table that action because you wanted to take up the amendments. So your choice would be, again, to either table it again with this, with the thinking that it was probably going to, the amendments are probably going to pass. So they would, you would never have to touch it again if you don't want to. You could go ahead and approve the, the variance. And they could go ahead and proceed now if you wanted to do that. Or you could deny their variance because you approved the amendment. So you have three choices.
I'm making a motion that we grant the variance for the property located three one three Mecca.
Okay. In this neighborhood, when I was out there last week, I did a bunch of measuring. There isn't a house in that area where you could have a twenty-five foot setback. That's that twenty-five foot setback from the city east and add another seven or so feet to that, it's thirty-two feet from this, from the pavement to their house. Is there a house in that area that even has that thirty-two feet front yard? I don't think there is.
I don't know.
I believe I went and measured, like I measured terrorists, I went all around, a bunch of those blocks.
I don't know, I probably, I couldn't.
Only in the far east end where they have more property. Other than that, you couldn't do that twenty-five foot anyway.
And that's, that's actually by design, I don't know exactly where they set that particular neighborhood. But the whole reason for having that front yard setback is so that you have that nice uniform.
Yeah.
That's the goal.
I understand. Okay. To vote on this, we can do it as a board of zoning. We don't have to come out to vote on this, do we?
No, no, you can do it as a board of zoning appeals. The only person that can't actually vote is Mike.
Yeah.
The other, the rest of you.
Yeah, Brandon's not here.
Yeah, Brandon would be there when I can.
Okay, I had a motion and a second. Would you repeat your motion?
I forgot what I made.
Okay, what, what did you motion, did you get it?
My motion was to grant the variance for the property located three one three Mecca.
And we have second?
Yes, I did.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to grant this variance from twenty, setback from twenty-five feet to five feet. Do we have any further discussion? All voters signify with aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries.
So to help you understand what just happened, they did, they did grant the variance and so you are allowed, even if this amendment doesn't pass.
You got a trooper.
So you could come as early, your contractor could come as early as tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, what? What?
What?
You gotta keep on these guys.
These not hear a song while we're on for Christmas as a new carport.
It's seriously, it's a song that gets you out of the weather. I know. Doesn't that make sense to you, not stepping on ice? Look at him, he's soft for him.
Would you like a motion to adjourn the board of zoning?
Yeah.
Second.
And reconvene, and reconvene with planning commission.
I didn't get that far.
Too many words.
Now, how do we get, get the permit? How do we do that?
Your contractor designs the carport, including something that will protect you from the weather. You will, and need cases to judge.
Yep.
Okay, so that's all we need to know. Oh, don't, don't let it relax.
Well, I remind you what I was talking about, I did, too.
Okay. All voters, adjourned to board of zoning appeals and reconvene with planning commission, signify with aye.
Aye.
Posed? Posed and carries. That's it, isn't it?
Yeah, the only other things is, if there was any other public comment, which we probably don't have. And I don't have any other business. How, well, I should say this. Just want to make sure, for those that are here, are you able to be at a planning commission meeting in December?
Can we have it at the morning?
I'm able to.
I'm not sure how we'll get all of my applicant here. So the reason I'm saying that is we have a rezoning petition for seven oh six East Madison to rezone from residential to commercial. It's surrounded by commercial and relevant and everything, so it's, it's not very controversial. And I think what I will also do, the city is also needing to rezone some property where they're going to put the water tower on East Chestnut. So I may go ahead and just add that one to the agenda, too.
As long as you don't have a Christmas.
So it's, it's, what is that? It's a centennial, I think.
Centennial.
Maybe it's Lord Road.
Oh, the country club?
No, it is, it's Ford Road, yes, no, that's where it's going to be.
Yeah. Yeah, because I think centennial, that's where, that's where city manager lives, so it wouldn't be there.
Yeah.
So. Put it on his property. So what happened was the city bought a portion of a property earlier this year so they could put that tower, been promising that, that tower to that area for pretty much since it was annexed into the city.
Yeah.
And I know we got a couple people on here that actually live out there, so.
Ten years.
So you live out there.
Yep. Yeah.
It should help you water pressure.
We're lower down, or we don't have much problem.
That's true.
But people up, up the hill have a lot more problem.
Well, I won't be there, but I'm sure all these gentlemen will be for you.
And hopefully we can get the other two as well. I, it's probably because they didn't call, they didn't hear from Travis.
This is Brandon's second. No, Brandon was here last time. This is Travis's second. He's fairly doing well.
To be fair, he was second last.
Last time, okay, so it was excuse.
That was, yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have nothing else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No, we adjourn.
Second. Why didn't you give more seconds?
Okay, I'll back up. You might. No, I'm. Teresa ran it down.
All voters signify with aye. Focus, you hear a lot.